That's pretty good. Better than we all did. We can't start early, I guess.
Okay.
Hey.
I got it last week.
That's not true. Never.
That'd be wrong.
Yeah, whenever you get that.
You remember the day?
No, I don't. It was towards the end of September. The site was here.
Thank you, Mayor. Let us pray. As we convene in our meeting tonight, we are reminded and reminded of and grateful for the many freedoms of living in our democracy where we as citizens participate in our own governance. We are thankful for this day that you've given us for its blessings and its opportunities. We're grateful for our city employees for their hard work and dedication and their service to the city. We acknowledge that through you all things are possible, and we now pray for your guidance and presence as we proceed tonight to fulfill our responsibilities to our city. We ask that our deliberations be with an open mind and that our decisions will be fair, be reasonable, and be according to your will. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We do have several proclamations this evening, which is wonderful that we've got so many important items to recognize. So we'll go through these. We'll read the proclamation. We'll invite you up and read the proclamation, and then we will have a chance to come down and present it and maybe do a photo. Can we handle that? First this evening, we've got a proclamation for Alcohol Awareness Month. I'd like to recognize Claudia Hill from the Moretown Community Group to receive this proclamation. Right there. Perfect. I'll read the proclamation, then we'll have you folks say a few words about the event. So, City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizing Alcohol Awareness Month, April 2024. Whereas across our nation, alcohol misuse is a major public health problem that affects Americans from all communities of all ages, races, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas alcohol kills more teens than all other drugs combined, and whereas underage drinking alone costs the citizens of North Carolina over $1.3 billion in medical care, work loss, and pain and suffering associated with multiple problems resulting from the use of alcohol by youth. And whereas underage drinkers consume over 9% of all alcohol sold in North Carolina totaling $314 million in sales, and 23% of high school students used alcohol in the past month. And whereas the Moretown Youth, Alamance Citizens for a Drug-Free Community and Moretown Community Group are working to raise awareness and to mobilize efforts within our community to implement strategies that prevent alcohol misuse and dependency by decreasing underage access to alcohol, changing community norms that promote underage and excessive alcohol consumption, and address policies pertaining to underage and excessive drinking. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim April 2024 as Alcohol Awareness Month in the City of Burlington, North Carolina, and commend this observance to all citizens. So thank you for your effort. Would you like to say a few words about what you guys are doing? You don't have to. I don't want to put you on spy. I'll come down. We'll get a picture. Okay, next on the agenda for proclamation is Litter Sweep, which is April 13th through the 27th of 2024. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Public Works Director Gary Smith and members of the New Leaf Society Board to receive this proclamation. So I'll read this. City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizing Litter Sweep, April 13th through the 27th, 2024. Whereas the North Carolina Department of Transportation sponsors a biannual statewide roadside litter removal initiative called Litter Sweep. And whereas volunteers and maintenance crews devote time during the sweep to safely remove litter with support provided by NC DOT via local program coordinators. And whereas all municipalities and citizens in Alamance County are invited to participate in Litter Sweep by New Leaf Society, a nonprofit organization that partners with local governments and NC DOT to improve the county's curb appeal. And whereas local governments play a critical role in keeping communities clean through public works and also through leadership by example. And whereas clean communities are more beautiful, desirable, and environmentally healthy places to live. And whereas spring is traditionally a time to celebrate nature and the renewal. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim April 13th through the 27th, 2024, as Litter Sweep in the City of Burlington. So thank you, guys, today. Someone like to say a few words about the event and what we're doing? It's hard to get anybody speaking tonight.
So, April 26th, we will have a citywide event. City employees will participate in Litter Sweep here throughout Burlington. We've got several areas. We've chosen to try to start a program where we can have regular pickups throughout the year. We know it's been a growing problem, and something needs to be done. And I'm just thankful for the work of some of our community leaders, New Leaf, stepping forward, some of our local churches, Boy Scouts. We think we're off to a good start.
Well, I do want to say, one of the line items here says, "Clean communities are more beautiful, desirable, and environmentally healthy places to live." And it means so much to this council and through Gary's efforts and our city manager and city staff. We're going to fund a position in our budget to really focus on that as we move forward as the budget's being presented. So I know a lot of works went into that. And we appreciate New Leaf for really setting the bar and the standard for that. And we're going to do everything we can to support it, so. So our next proclamation this evening is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, which is April 14th through the 20th. This time, we'll recognize Police Chief Alan Baylog and the Burlington Police Department staff to receive this proclamation. City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizing National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 14th through the 20th. Whereas this week is a time to show our appreciation and to recognize that our health, safety, and well-being are often dependent on the commitment and steadfast devotion of public safety telecommunications, because emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical service, or other critical services. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of a telecommunications to answer an emergency or non-emergency call for service, to dispatch law enforcement, firefighters, and medical personnel is critical to the sanctity of life and preservation of property. The safety of our police officers and our firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Burlington Graham Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunications are dedicated men and women who are professional staff and are more than anonymous voices on the telephone line. They are the first responder and are the most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunications are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them the information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunications have assisted with the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. The work of these unseen heroes is invaluable in emergency situations, and each of these dedicated men and women deserves our heartfelt appreciation. Citizens place their trust in these individuals, not just this week, but every day of the year. And whereas each telecommunications exhibits compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job assisting those in need. Now, therefore, in recognition of the men and women of the Burlington Graham Communications Center, whose diligence and professionalism keep our citizens in the City of Burlington and the City of Graham safe, I, Mayor Jim Butler, on behalf of this Burlington City Council hereby proclaim April 14th through 20th as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. So congratulations and thank you. I know you guys will say a few.
So as the Director of the Burlington Communications Center, I'd just like to thank you, the council, the police department, and the entire community's support for these unsung heroes that literally sit in a dark room behind the scenes. I like to call them the Wizard of Oz, hides behind the curtain, makes everything happen. So I'm very proud to be associated with that department.
Yep. And if you ever go in there, you understand that we need the Wizard of Oz. That's a pretty important piece. Chief, how many calls a year do you think come through? Chief, how many calls per year do you think come through this?
Total telephone calls is probably close to, I know calls for service between us and the City of Graham that we dispatch forward, right at 99,900, last calendar year.
99,900.
Add another 30,000 if you add new charges. So probably 125,000 calls.
Go see the system.
Yes, sir.
Busy group.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate you guys tremendously. And next, we have proclamation for Arbor Day, May 4th, 2024. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Arbor Day Manager, Jason Barnhill, to receive this proclamation. You're welcome. Bring them all. Absolutely. Yep. We appreciate everyone being here. Okay, the City of Burlington, North Carolina proclamation recognizing Arbor Day, May 4th, 2024. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this day, which eventually became known as Arbor Day, was initially observed in the state of Nebraska with the planting of over a million trees. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas the important role of trees in our environmental system must not be taken for granted. Trees can reduce topsoil erosion, reduce heating and cooling costs, moderate ambient temperatures, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitats for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource from which numerous products are derived, such as paper, materials for the construction industry, and fuel for heating. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of beauty, joy, and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council hereby proclaim Saturday, May 4th, 2024, as Arbor Day in the City of Burlington. So thank you, guys. Do you want to introduce your group?
Yeah, so this is our Tree and Appearance Commission. These guys are responsible for making Arbor Day happen. And we also give out an appearance award for the city. So they're responsible for that as well. So we wanted to recognize them for their order.
I'm glad you did. We're so appreciative of our boards and commissions, and they do really unsung heroes too, and a lot of work that our citizens do through boards and commissions, and we greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
If I could take a second, I'd like to invite everybody here to the Carousel Festival on May 4th. This board and commission is going to put on a tree giveaway. And we're going to be located at the outfield fence on Ball Field Number One. We have contests that run all day, and come by and win a tree.
Our next item on the agenda is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask that there be no conflicts concerning tonight's agenda items.
Thank you. Next is the approval of minutes. April 2nd, 2024, City Council meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Those are approved. The next is a request for additions to the consent agenda. Item E, Budget Amendment 2024-35, Police Rico Appropriations. And item F, Budget Amendment 2024-36, Police Headquarters Building and Weatherproofing Product, both of which we were briefed on yesterday evening. Is there a motion on the additions?
Agreed.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? So those additions to the consent agenda are approved. At this time, we will entertain a motion for the adoption of the agenda. We have a motion to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? So the agenda is adopted. The consent agenda is next. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to establish Thursday, May 2nd, 2024, as the date for advertisement of delinquent real property tax liens for 2023 pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 105-369. Item B, to approve the Recreation and Parks Department application to the North Carolina Division of Parks and Recreation 2024 Accessible Parks Grant to provide funding for an ADA project in Burlington City Park. Item C, to adopt a resolution to apply for North Carolina Division of Water Infrastructure funding for PFAS drinking water treatment upgrades. Item D, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-34 to allocate funds awarded to the Recreation and Parks Cronotl Senior Center by the North Carolina Department of Insurance Medicare improvements for patients and providers. Item E, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-35 for the Police Department to allocate RICO appropriations to purchase equipment and software for a drone-as-first-responder or DFR to upgrade the police firefighting and training facility, acquire a tactical camera for the SWAT team, and purchase analytical software to reduce crime more precisely. Item F, to approve Budget Amendment 2024-36 to allocate funds to complete the weatherproofing project for the Police Department Headquarters Building. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Agreed.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? So thank you. The consent agenda is approved. Next, we move into new business. At this time, we have one item under new business. Item 1, City Council will consider approving the temporary use of a portion of City Park Lot 5 from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and a portion of City Parking Lot 3 from 10:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to allow Homestead Market to set up a mobile farmers' market each Tuesday beginning in May 2024 through November 2024. At this time, we'll recognize our downtown manager, Erin Nettles. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So hopefully you have a map in your pocket. But we've had a request from a mobile farmers' market, as Mayor stated, to be in downtown in two different lots each Tuesday, May through November. They'll be for two hours in Lot 5, and then they move to two hours in Lot 3. Lot 5 is the one by the City AMX building, and they did this a few times last fall. They decided to continue it May through November because they had success there. So this time, they're going to look for, you know, doing it for a number of months, and they'll just pick up and move about halfway through their time from one lot to the other, being that they're mobile. They are working on the correct permits right now. We have not received those to date, but they know that they need to be in place before this can take place. They're hoping to start the first Tuesday of May.
So what is the size of this market that they bring? Is it...?
It's like a large trailer that they would pull behind a truck. They open it up, and the back drops down, and then they bring out tables with crates of food on it. You can also go into the truck, and it's like a little shopping area. They take up about five parking places or so, and then pack it up that quickly and move on.
Move on. Because I mean, personally, I'd love to see a pretty vibrant farmers' market in our downtown. I think it is a perfect location, and it'll just add to what we're already trying to do for downtown. So it's good that we have some activity with that. But I would love to figure out a way to grow that and even come up with something. I know in some municipalities, there's permanent structures. They have such a large group of farmers that come out. So it would be good to see that grow. Any questions for Erin? Please. If there are no questions, we'll entertain a motion on the request.
So moved.
I'm sorry, Jeff.
Motion to approve.
I said we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? Thank you, Erin. Thank you so much. At this time, we'll move into public comments or no other new business. There are no public comments right now. Let me see. Okay, so moving into city council comments, I have a few. I know we've had several police department community events, and still to, there's a couple more that have not, that are still before us. One tomorrow, I guess, Awards and Promotions Recognition, 3:30 at Paramount Theater. Is that right? So we're going to celebrate recent promotions and awards throughout the department. So that would be an important event. And then the police department is doing Autism Awareness Family Day, which is Saturday, the 27th, from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m. So those are two very important events. I know Recreation and Parks is hosting a job fair, April 26th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Cronotl Senior Center, and opportunities are available kind of on the spot.
Higher on the spot?
Yep.
Partially higher.
Partially.
With a lot of them.
Yep. Then we have upcoming big event, which is our Burlington Carousel Festival. That is May 4th and 5th at Burlington City Park. So we're going to have free rides. There'll be several concerts on both days and a variety of artists and vendors. So I think the headliner for this year's festival is Chase Bryant, which will be performing May 4th at 6:00 p.m. Is that right, Tony?
Yes, sir.
Sir, do.
Yep. So I know that's going to be a huge event, and we look forward to that. And then a special congratulations to our police department and ANET team, our Alamance Narcotics Enforcement Team. They received the very prestigious National High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Award. And we do want to recognize them. I think there was a contingency that went up last week to Washington, D.C. for the award ceremony. So we're very proud of our police department, our law enforcement men and women, and that's just another accolade that shows the level of quality they provide to our community. And then upcoming, we have city advisory boards and commissions appointment to be considered soon. So if anyone has any interest, we just heard from our tree commission tonight, this evening. So just those boards and commissions are extremely important. So I know we always have a lot of openings as we rotate people through. So if anyone... So if anyone has any desire, please apply online. You can apply at burlantonnc.gov/boards, and or reach out to John Vernon with City Hall. Any other council comments? At this time, we do have a request for closed session.
Mayor, I make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.1186 to discuss periodic performance evaluation of City Manager Craig Honeycutt and City Attorney David Houghan.
We have a request to go into closed session. Is there a second? Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye. Any opposed? At this time, we will enter the closed session.